All right. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Bench. I'm the Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. It is 7:00 PM on January 12, 2022, and I am calling this meeting a School Committee to Order. The first item on our agenda, as with our regular meetings, is public comment. If there are any in attendance virtually who would like to make a public comment, please put your name in the chat, and we will call on you in order. Give it a minute if anyone wants to make a public comment. All right. Well, seeing none, we will move forward with our meeting. All right. Next up, we have informational reports, and we would like student representative, who today is Hadley Zainal.
Yeah. Not too many updates, but we've done a few things in the past month or two. First one, we just started a winter coat drive, which is like all winter apparel, really. It's not just coats. It just started today, and it's going until January 28. The donation box is in the Lobby of Smith Academy if anyone's interested in donating. We also, before Christmas, we ran a Adopt a Family. So the Student Council adopted a family and bought all of their Christmas presents. And it went really well, and they really loved all their presents. We had two little girls, an eight-year-old boy, and a mom, and they loved their presents. We raised like almost $400 for them, which was really great. We had some workshops right before winter break that went really well, and they were fun and interactive with the whole student body, and it was just the day before winter break started, that half day. And then we had a little Jolly Ball tournament beforehand. And I guess, not Student Council-wise, but Class of 2023 just had a really successful can and bottle drive, and community members really helped out with that. So that's pretty much all from Smith Academy.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Do committee members have any questions for Hadley about her report?
Just one. Where are the winter coats going?
So we're gonna donate them to a homeless shelter in Northampton, I believe. We haven't decided exactly where, but I think that's where they're going.
So you're looking for all sizes?
Yes, all sizes, in good condition. Socks do have to be brand-new, but everything else just in good condition.
Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Hadley.
I'm gonna have to explain Jolly Ball to her.
Yeah. It's fun. It's really fun.
All right. Thank you so much to Ms. Zainal. Next up, I would like to hear from our CPAC representative, Sean Selby. She is joining us virtually, and she would like to give a report on the CPAC Committee.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's CPAC for me, but if it's not for you, that's all right. I'll go ahead. So my name is Sean Selby. I am the current Chair of the CPAC, or the Special Education Care. As you may know, the CPAC receives its statutory authority from the Chapter 7 of the Native and Chief Section 3 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Its duties include advising the district on matters that could be educational difficulties, meeting regularly with school officials, and participating in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education program. The CPAC here in Hatfield has not met since April 2019, and with the reservation at the start of the 2019-2020 school year, it became a specialty. And a lot has transpired since 2020, as we all know. However, the retirement of Mr. Robert and Ms. Otis and the subsequent hire of Ms. Bremner have created an opportunity to reflect this district's commitment to having a CPAC, and Ms. Bremner and I have the intention to speak about invigorating parent membership. This is what I am here to speak to you about today. With the emphasis on online mode of communication, creating a Facebook page for the last year and a half, the address is facebook.com/hatfieldscpac. I use the Federation for Children with Special Needs, among other resources, to post, and I have working events, webinars, and information for all district families if they desire. I also have an email, hatfieldcpac@gmail.com, and I have been able to communicate with several district families about their concerns over the past year via email and phone. I've seen our CPAC brochure and Ms. Bremner to distribute to families who have special education meetings. Membership in the CPAC has traditionally been low. Families are busy, and many folks don't wish to call attention to themselves. I personally believe that CPAC should act as a resource for all district families, whether they use special education services or not, and should work to break down barriers and stigma regarding educational needs. It's my intention to seek new ideas regarding maintaining this council for the benefits of families and the district in compliance with education law. Due to the pandemic and recent changes in open meeting law, I will be hosting an informational Google Meet for end of next week on Tuesday, January 18. According to our bylaws, general membership in the CPAC is open to anyone interested in special education services, laws, and regulations. This includes, but is not limited to, parents and guardians of children who have or may need an individual education plan, or IEP, a 504 accommodation, a district curriculum accommodation plan, or DCAF, or an out-of-district placement. My hope today is that you, the school committee, will agree that the CPAC is a special education here in Hatfield and will join me in promoting peer-to-peer. I also came here today to respectfully ask for a member of the school committee to agree to become a CPAC liaison and participate with me in the future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
It was a great presentation.
Yes. First things first, we appreciate you so much. I really appreciate your coming forward to tell us a little bit more about the role of your committee. Questions?
I have a clarification question.
Sure.
I think I know the answer, but just in case anybody listening doesn't. Is this for anyone in the entire district or strictly elementary? Because I think in the past, it seemed to have been focused more on elementary, or at least elementary parents were the ones that were involved. So if it is for the entire district that is, gives us a better direction on how to push it, that it is for everybody?
It is for everybody. Everybody in the district.
It is for everybody, and one of the executive members had somebody at Smith Academy.
Great.
July.
Wonderful.
What other questions do committee members have for Sean? No questions yet. I'm excited that it's starting back up. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm thrilled to hear that you're not alone, that membership is growing. That's fantastic.
I would be happy to be the rep for the school committee on CPAC. This is Kathy Engelhardt, if you couldn't tell. As my other roles are the rep to the collaborative, which is also special ed, and I'm supposed to be appointed to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Subcommittee for Special Ed as well. So it seems like it would be kind of a nice fit to be included.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathy. That sounds great.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions from the school committee, we will thank Sean for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, let's hear from our superintendent.
Yes, thank you.
Including the personnel report.
Yes, the personnel report is in your packet. I can answer questions or go over that piece by piece if you'd like. We're, to start off with, we are weathering the New England cold. We've had some issues with heat in both buildings. We're working to address those and got some estimate today for about a little over $9,000 to make some repairs, and we'll be getting on those. These are things that either just didn't come to fruition or came to fruition within recent days. So it just happened that the cold came on to us as well, but I think for the most part, things are flowing better now at Hatfield Elementary and Smith Academy. For the most part, the classrooms are very at a good temperature. Some very cold first thing in the morning. It just takes a while for the building to warm up. The gymnasium is cool all day, maybe even cold. But so the exercise does everybody good in there. Just a reminder that I would encourage everybody to wear appropriate attire. It's really important. I understand the nature of being a young adult and adolescent. They want to wear shorts and whatnot in this weather, and I can appreciate it. My son did it as well, but just know that they should come with something else, some, you know, blanket or something else just to stay warm in some of the classrooms that might be a little cold first thing in the morning at 7:30. The Select Board met last night and reviewed some ARPA fund expenditures that they received ARPA funds in excess of $900,000. And at some point, we'll be receiving over $9,000 for expenses related to COVID that we were spent, that we did not plan to at the beginning of the school year. So we're very grateful and very appreciative of the effort to have those funds reimbursed at some point during the year. It sounded like, not that the check is in the mail, but the process was pretty quick last night, and they were very expedient about it. So it's not something that's gonna take a long time for them to move out the money. We're going to talk about budget transfers tonight, and the information is in the packet, and I'll be going over those as well. We'll be doing it in two different segments. Some budget transfers that are specific to the budget, and then we'll be doing some grant transfers, just because Ms. Bremner has been out. We'll, I'll discuss those with her before the next meeting, and we'll do those at the next meeting. Again, none of our control accounts are overextended. These are individual lines. It's been past practice here, the individual lines that bring everything to zero, which is fine, but that's not necessary. But I understand it, and we're gonna continue to do that. Just a quick COVID update. We are doing very well. Everybody's working very hard to maintain a healthy environment for everybody at both schools. It's really, today's numbers, I believe we were five at Hatfield Elementary and one staff, and four at M. Smith Academy. So, you know, we're very low compared to our neighbors, which is great. We haven't had to, had, you know, closed classrooms or anything like that in the recent events. We've had to do some combining of classrooms because of staffing and so forth, but even the staffing right now is in pretty good shape at Hatfield Elementary in terms of staffing out related to themselves being ill or family members needing to be quarantined and so forth. So things are looking good in that regard. The Commissioner did extend the mask requirement through February 28. That, of course, is the day we come back from a vacation. So I'm not exactly sure when he's gonna tell us that he's gonna continue it or not continue it, being a Monday. Usually his information comes out on a Tuesday, but my guess is that he'll have some sort of meeting with superintendents the Wednesday during the vacation so that the information can get out and so forth. We are, we're taking the added precaution of not allowing fans other than Hatfield spectators at our games. Many of our schools in the area are doing this. There's actually, I think, only one in our league that's allowing a limited basis fans from both communities at a basketball game. So, and that we do, and there's, I believe, one community that's put all events on pause. I just don't think we're there. I don't think it's necessary to put anything on pause. It's good for the kids. It's, you know, important for them. So as long as we can continue, and there's no outbreak on either one of our teams, or four teams, really, GJV, girls and boys and varsity. So this is, you know, I think, a reasonable effort to continue to move forward, and we haven't had any complaints from visiting communities either. So at this point, moving on to personnel, we have the principal search for Hatfield Elementary. That'll be going on next week. We do have 13 candidates in the pool, and I'm going through the resumes now. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have a slate of candidates. We have a committee put together. Ms. Maloney will be on it from the school committee, and we'll be doing interviews on the 18th, and then on the 20th, we'll invite finalists, if we have finalists, to come back and to meet with the administrative team and to meet with parents and the rest of the staff that aren't on the interview committee. So I think it'll be a very complete process, and we'll get a great candidate to move on with the leadership of Hatfield Elementary School. We thought we were fully staffed, and we did hire a per diem nurse, but she worked one day and then decided not to come back. It wasn't because of the job that she hired, was hired for. I think she, actually, I thought what I heard was she left nursing altogether. She stopped being a nurse. So I think there's bigger things that were going on. So we, that position continued to be advertised, so we are, that's still posted, and hopefully we will be able to find someone. It's really important to help out our nurses during this time, especially during the test and stay testing that probably will ramp up before it slows down. So, and then just some reminders, January 17 is Martin Luther King Day, and the district is closed, and for the high school and middle school, the second quarter ends on January 21st.
Wonderful. Thank you. What questions do committee members have for Mr. Wood?
Do you have a, what has been the expectation of the start date for a new principal coming out of this hiring process?
So we're hopeful that the person could start on or about February 8.
Wow. Same spec.
It does, but, I mean.
But don't most, if they're in a position anywhere, don't most contracts have some kind of clause of so many days' notice?
They do, but usually they'll say as negotiated with the superintendent, and usually, it's been my experience, that when candidates have sort of made up their mind that they need to or want to go, the superintendent lets them out of their contract to make the change so that they can move on as well for new leadership. I mean, we'll work with any district that, you know, needs to have more time, and I'll do the same thing, you know, as I'm filling in at SA, I'll fill in down there while practical physical comes up to SA.
So it's certainly not contingent that they can start that day?
It's not contingent on their being hired, and that's for sure. Yeah.
Meeting the candidates on the 20th, do you have a time?
I told the people on the interview committee that we would slate 12 to 5.
Wow.
It's on the 18th, correct?
On the 18th. Oh, I'm sorry.
The 20th to meet the parents.
No, I haven't set up a time yet, exactly, but, yeah, so.
And that would be at ATS?
It'll be, we will do a remote piece of it, though.
Okay.
So that more parents can take part in that, yes, than it would be at Hatfield.
Are you still gonna do offer in person or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
That's all I have. Any other questions from committee members? Are we, can you just clarify? We're still trying to hire for the per diem nurse.
Correct.
And what other positions?
I think we are all set now for paraprofessionals.
At the elementary.
At the elementary school. We have one vacancy still at Smith Academy.
For a paraprofessional?
For a paraprofessional. Correct.
So I guess I'm curious how anomalous it is that we had, as we look at the new hires and then the staff who left since July, that there are a handful of folks who are on both lists. Is this largely just due to a really unusual hiring environment right now, that we would see someone start and leave within a year? Or is there more to that story?
You mean, they left and then they came back?
No, I'm really looking at the people that we hired and that were new, and they just have, already left the position.
Well, actually, it's kind of unclear on the list which.
Which direction.
Which direction.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think this is an anomaly year. We have had a very challenging time hiring paraprofessionals, and so we've had a number of them who have agreed to come on board. They've done the onboarding, they've done their paperwork, but then they, we've had a couple of people ghost us, you know, they just never showed up. We've had a few people, after they heard the total package for compensation, decide that they had another opportunity on the table, and they took that. So, yeah.
It's really just two, and we know the reason for the one.
I'm just looking at people who showed up on both lists. There were a few.
Kitchen, three.
There's three names.
Yeah. There's three. There's two, oh, yeah, okay. One pair, one kitchen, and the other one, we already know.
Yeah, it's just checking.
So, and we also, I won't identify it further, but we had a staff person who came on board and then had a medical issue within the family and had to leave. So, you know, there are.
That happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Events.
Yeah. I really appreciate the list, but maybe it would be helpful to have even the month listed with the person's name so that we can tell the flow a little better.
Yeah.
Or even just going forward, just, we'll do it every month and.
Yeah.
This is just a catch-up. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Is the kitchens fully staffed at this point?
It is fully staffed. I think Mr. Hoffman would like more staffed. I'd say it's fully staffed. I mean, we're able to produce lunches and take care of the kitchens and so forth, but I think he would, he would ideally like a third person in each kitchen.
I actually do have a question now that we are talking about all this. Math intervention, have we hired for that position?
I'm gonna let Dr. Driscoll kind of explain how we've patched it together.
Oh, I know how we've patched it together. I just didn't know if we're gonna fix it.
Yes, we have.
Okay. So we're gonna actually have a person?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a short answer to that.
Person is good. Do you know when that person will be starting?
They've already started.
Oh.
They're in the building, getting schedules together, looking at data, and putting lists together right now.
Okay. So if one would like their child with math intervention, how would they do that?
So we're in the process right now. So the way intervention works with either reading or math is we collect data first.
Yeah.
So we do screener assessments to see, and then we see, okay, which students under that, under that screener qualify, and then we work to see, you know, where they fit into the schedule, and then we build that. So we're in the process right now of completing the screener that we have, and then we'll work with the, with the interventions to put those groups together, and they should be starting, you know, in the next, next couple of weeks. Absolutely.
What happens if it's an entire class?
Well, that, we would, we would.
It's the case.
Address that one, too.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Wood? All right. Let's hear from Dr. Driscoll.
All right. So Superintendent Wood talked a little bit about the, you know, the, what we're, what we're doing at school for, to deal with the kind of recent spike in COVID. I'm happy to kind of report that we, you know, despite the regional spike, we're not, at the elementary school, we're not really even at the level we were in November, which is a great place to be, considering. I'm gonna knock on some, knock on some wood. Currently, we have, as Superintendent Wood said, we have five cases at the elementary school, only one of which has been, that we're testing and staying for, which means they were in school and they're potentially contagious, which is a nice place to be. We're continuing to pool test twice a week. We did it yesterday. We're awaiting those results now. They're kind of, they're, they're coming a little more slowly than they were. One of the reasons for that is because in those pooled tests, they've, rather than having 10, you know, 10 swabs per tube, they're allowing us to go down to two or three per tube, which means that if there's a presumptive positive, you only have to test those, you know, two, two individuals or three individuals, which is really, really helpful.
Yeah.
So that's, that's great. There's been some, I've got some feedback about the way that we notify. One, just, just so everyone here is aware, the way that we found most effective to do that is to notify the close contacts first. You know, you're, you know, so your child was potentially a close contact of someone who was in school and they were positive, and then notify, you know, kind of the wider, you know, classroom or, you know, group to say, there, there was a close con, you know, there was someone who is considered positive, unless you received a close contact notification, your child is not considered a close contact. Because we found that if we just notified that small group of close contacts, other people heard through the grapevine, and then we were getting all kinds of phone calls about, it was my child, wasn't my child, they're in this class, they're not in this class. So to cover our bases that way, we've determined that that's a pretty effective way to do it, and so that seems to be pretty, pretty, working pretty well. As I mentioned last meeting, we are sending a cohort of teachers to the Orton-Gillingham training, starting this month. So that will actually be starting tomorrow. We have a trainer coming, and so it's a group from our school and from Hadley Elementary, so they're combining, so we have a full cohort. So on Thursdays, they will, they'll go through the class, and then they'll also be doing their tutoring hours, which is, which is really, really great. So that's gonna increase our ability to serve students across all tiers in a, with a structured literacy approach, which is gonna be really, really beneficial in the short term as well as in the, in the long term for our district. As Superintendent Wood said, I'm happy to report that we're now fully staffed. We were. We are still waiting to get the nursing support, too. And so we're, I'd like to give a shout-out to Ms. Bremner for kind of keeping her foot on the gas pedal in terms of the hiring, especially for our paraprofessional staff and our special ed staff. She's been really, really phenomenal in doing that. And we have, one thing that I wanted to highlight that's, that's been postponed a little bit for a couple of reasons, is that we had, we were really excited to invite some, and have some Smith Academy students to come down to the elementary school. They're gonna be performing puppet shows based on African folktales that they've been, been learning about up at Smith Academy. Our kids are very excited about it, too, so we're really looking forward to that. That's gonna be happening later, later this month, I believe. Additionally, we have, you know, a lot of different things going on for Martin Luther King Day at the elementary school. One of the things that's really nice is our, one of our kindergarten classes, as they're learning, they've decided that they want to make posters about love and harmony, kind of PSAs for the elementary school, that they're gonna, they're gonna work on together to put up around the school, which I think will be really, really nice. And then lastly, as Superintendent Wood mentioned, everyone here knows, too, my role within the schools will be shifting later this month, and I think this is likely gonna be my last school committee update as principal of Hatfield Elementary before I move to Smith Academy. So I'm really looking forward to that shift and to continuing my work here at Hatfield Public Schools in that new role. And I'm really, I remain committed to ensuring a smooth transition at the elementary level and helping out however I can in that, in that process. I think, I think, I think it'll be good.
Thank you so much. What questions do we have for Dr. Driscoll?
I have two things. One, I am thrilled about the seventh graders coming down to do puppet shows. That's exactly the kind of thing that I was mentioning before to you about having more interaction between the two schools, and I'm happy that that's happening. And the other thing is about the, and it's not specifically to you, it's kind of a district thing, regarding the close contact notification. If we could really make sure. If we could really make sure that when the email goes out, that a child was a close contact, that we include the grade. Because I have seen some that did not include a grade and parents who have more than one child don't know which kid that has to go in for a test.
Yeah. And we updated a template that we, the template that we use, and it has that specific provision in there for that reason.
Right.
And beyond that, we also have, at least at the elementary school, I'm assuming at Smith Academy, we have several families with twins. So, even within that grade, we then have to figure out where we.
All the things.
Thank you. That's it.
As a recipient of some of those emails, as I'm sure we all have been.
The recent one does have the grade.
I, yeah, I think the system you've landed on is a really good improvement. Thank you. Especially letting the broader community know because you do kind of like, oh, wait. And so, it's really helped anxiety, I think is great. My question is, how do we get a chance to see the MLK Love and Harmony posters? Because that sounds really delightful. Is there an opportunity to take photos of those?
Absolutely, there is. Yeah, I can, I'll put them up.
I'm probably not alone in wanting to see those.
Yeah. And I've been trying to be more active on our elementary Facebook page, so I'll take some pictures and make sure that they're up there on that, too.
Awesome. All right. Seeing no further questions, is Ms. Bremner available to join us?
Yeah, I don't see her on here. So, there is a written, she had a brief report, just that she's been working with the advocacy, with the Office of Child Advocates on behalf of many of our students, which is a nice relationship and partnership to have. And also, this spring, we'll be having that tiered focus monitoring process with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and that's an every six year, is a three-year installment that we do, that every district does. And we're going through that now. And so, she's, it's mostly a record review and pulling the policies together so they're all in one place so that the department can look at.
From there, we can go to subcommittee reports. Unfortunately, Ms. Maloney did contact me this evening saying she was not gonna be able to be here. She usually presents for the policy subcommittee, however, she did send me the notes that she had, and I was in attendance at this meeting. That we had. So, we did meet in late December. We reviewed our COVID guidelines and mask guidelines and heard reports from school administration that things had been going very well. And there was some question about visiting sports teams and visiting spectators and letting them know what our, you know, COVID guidelines are inside our building. And so, that was discussed, but at this time, as Mr. Wood said, we are not having spectator, outside spectators at our games. Superintendent Wood also reviewed our vaccination rates from the available data that we had. And given the current increase in COVID cases, the policy committee did not make any recommendation to changing of any masking protocols at this time, although, again, that was just reinforced by Desi. And I think that is pretty much it. We reviewed the pool testing numbers and we're developing an equity assessment for our policies. Is that correct?
Yes, that's.
Okay. Do you folks have any questions for me about the policy subcommittee?
Where are we in regards to vaccination percentage per, I know district-wise, we were.
We were at like sixty-five percent.
Something like that.
Right.
But where are we, like, school-wide? You know, like, elementary and.
Building-wise, right?
Yeah, building-wise, that's what I meant.
Yep. So, recent data, like, within.
Like, more recent than the policy committee.
More recent than the policy. Are five to elevens within, so it's, this is one of the issues that we run into. I have Hatfield data. I don't have school-wide data.
Oh, because we only get, you only get by town.
By town. So, the town of Hatfield has about sixty-five percent, sixty-five percent of the five to eleven-year-olds. And then.
That was just five to eleven. So, that's not including everybody else.
I thought that was town rate. I read that wrong, too.
Yeah, I was thinking that was district-wide. So, it's probably higher.
So, and, right. And for our twelve to eighteen-year-olds, we're close to eighty percent still.
But it's not our, it's not our building population, because that's just Hatfield.
That is just Hatfield. That's correct. And so.
And the policy, by understanding from the state, is gonna be who's in the building.
It's who's in the building. And I reached out, well, so I reached out to Desi and asked, is there an easy way to do this? They have put this, put us in contact with.
No.
A nurse that has figured out a way to do it. And so, we're gonna reach out to that person and try to make a connection, see if we can do.
How recent is that conversation? Has it been since the state put out the whole, you can look up your vax record database?
Yes. Yeah. So, I reached out, I think, right after our last policy meeting. And it took a little bit for them to get back to me, but I got information, I think, last, at the end of last week, sometime.
Okay. Because I was optimistic when I saw the news about the other sort of statewide database. I'm like, oh, that would be lovely, because it shows all the vaccinations, not just the first.
Right.
Because what do we count as being, do we count, what counts as being fully vaccinated at this point?
So, we're going with Desi's vaccination definition. So, they have to have their two, two main ones and a booster if it's, their group has one.
Gotcha.
Right. The other thing we did discuss in policy is that this is only looking at our students.
Correct.
So, we don't have currently data on staff vaccination.
Right. But I'm working on that, and they are working on that.
Yep.
Hopefully, that database might help, too.
We'll figure it out. All right. Any other questions about policy? All right. Danielle, would you like to tell us about budget?
So, we've met a couple of times since our last meeting. I didn't write anything up formally, but we've basically been talking about the draft presentation that we're gonna see here in a little while. So, you might have more questions when that comes up. We're doing okay as far as budget this year. And we're gonna have to work really hard to make sure that we're okay for next year. And I'm in full hopes that the town will support us with that. So, yeah, so we'll see more when that comes up.
All right. Awesome. And I do anticipate we will speak lots about the budget.
I'm sure.
Later in the agenda.
I'm sure.
So, I have no further questions at this time.
Okay.
Kathy, I didn't know if you had any questions for them?
Nope.
Okay. Let's hear from capital planning.
Okay. So, capital planning has had two joint meetings, November sixteenth and last night, Jan eleventh, with the select board and the finance committee to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. And as you heard, town is getting nine hundred and seventy-one thousand for ARPA funding for the town. The new federal guidelines open up what that can be used for a lot more broadly than we first thought. Four hundred and seventy-nine thousand is already available with the balance coming in May. So, all departments were asked for town to put in submittals for things that that money might go towards. Schools were specifically requested to keep those submittals to COVID-specific costs that we had already spent. We were, I think the understanding was that we had seen a lot of money from cares last year, so other departments were given sort of a broader reach for those funds. The consensus from last night's meeting that was that there would be coverage given to some smaller ticket items that were COVID-based, and then some larger ticketed items that tackle infrastructure needs and that had already been vetted and were already part of the capital plan. So, they said yes to, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars of spending. Get that number exactly right. Across town, not us.
I was like, wow!
Yeah, no, this is townwide, before we get excited. And as part of that, schools are gonna see, we're gonna get nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. And that specifically is covering some additional air purifiers, replacement filters for all of last year's air purifiers, plus I think probably some of the new ones as well, replacement for the sanitizing bulbs with the lawn things, and the clear masks that we added that came in through our conversations. So, we're getting some money to cover those COVID costs. The next capital planning meeting, which is coming later this month, is gonna be focused on upcoming fiscal year capital plans. The school district priorities that have been submitted are, the top of the list is the roof replacement at HES, which was previously slotted in for fiscal year twenty-four, and we're looking to bring that up to like the summer of twenty-two. And the conversation we've had thus far, my point has been, we've watched a lot of neighboring communities have mold issues, and a roof that needs repair, if we can't get that fixed, can lead to much more significant issues. So, I think that has attention broadly, and I expect some good support. It's a high-ticket item. Also, continuing on the list, it's been on our capital plan along, is technology reemplacement. So, this is a rolling replacement for laptops. Obviously, that's where we are. I wouldn't even say that's the future. That's where we are, is that we need that available. Newer to the list is an office renewal refurbishment for Smith Academy specific, so that we can get it handicap accessible, which is, I think we found on the budget committee a little surprising that that, you know, but it's been a while since that office was done, but we certainly have the need for that. And as well as, I think there's some visibility issues that are safety concerns, that we would like to see some changes there. And then, because it falls on the capital plan because of the size, is just equipped with purchase, so some of carpeting per year. Because I do believe that several of you went to school there with the carpeting that is actually still in the building. So, while it might say ten-plus years, I think it may have been a little more. So, that's where we are with capital planning.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
If I could just comment about the technology piece. In the past, we had, as a committee, made a commitment to do, as you talked about, the rolling every year so many. And we had used school of choice funds. We put a cap on how much per year to put towards technology.
So, I will ask, I will defer, but my understanding is just because of the size of that commitment, which I don't think has changed tremendously, it's got to go to capital planning. It's not.
So, I would definitely say it has a, it's a better fit for capital planning. And I wouldn't say that it has to, like, there's no regulation that requires.
I thought there was a dollar point at which something had to go to the capital planning list.
Well, that's, that's the definition of capital. So, that's why I say it's a better placement, but that doesn't mean that the school committee couldn't make a different decision about where.
I don't think the school of choice funds are available for that, to be quite honest with you. We were looking to do that. And it has, for the last several years, been on the capital planning list. So, this isn't new to the list this year.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, you know, goodwill to the town of, hey, we need a new roof, but, you know, we need your help with that here. We can, we can kick in some towards technology or, you know, something.
Right. I think it's also fair to say that there are several other things that have been on the list from the schools that we are actually looking to push back because we're looking to bring things up. So, there have been parking lots.
I was just thinking, I was just laughing in my head about the parking lots that have probably been on that list for at least fifteen years.
Yeah.
And we keep pushing the parking lots back because of everything else that comes up.
Yes.
I hear that.
Yep.
So, but I agree with you about having some goodwill, but there, so there is that piece of it, too, is pushing some things back.
Okay.
And these, since this meeting was last night, I didn't have this in the packet, but I am, you get that to Superintendent Wood, that way he has it for minutes.
Yep. Chrissy, I just have a quick question about the ARPA funds. So, you said at the meeting last night, the town did commit to about four hundred thousand dollars of those funds? Yes. And they were reimbursing COVID costs, but also putting some of that money towards capital needs for the town?
Most of it went to capital needs.
So.
That has good, that bodes well for us in some of our priorities because other things have come off the list.
Right.
That are gonna get covered by ARPA.
Got it. And there's another five hundred thousand dollars that the town has not yet used, allotted.
Correct.
Right.
And one of the changes, and I think this is good for all communities, is that this particular, one of the changes that they made is that this particular allotment of funds, I think, has a four-year window shelf life from here on out. It's FY twenty-seven now or twenty-six? And the select board can manage that process. So, if emergencies come up, they can handle it, you know, and take it from those funds and so forth. So, that's also a good thing.
Yeah.
For the town.
So, it's, Becca, it was four hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight.
Well, perfect. Okay. Okay. Any other questions about capital, capital planning? Okay. All righty. Now, we can move on to more of our business. Let's start with meeting minutes. We have a number of minutes in the packet for school committee members, and they're all from the budget subcommittee.
Did we not have minutes yet for our December meeting?
We do. And I just, I don't see them in the packet.
It did not make it into the packet.
I don't make it into the packet.
I'm very sorry about that.
They are done.
Yeah. I guess I don't know why. Well, sorry.
I didn't force them.
That's okay. Yeah. Next time.
Perhaps before, there is a motion, I have an amendment, or would we like a motion on the table before we can discuss amendments?
I don't feel strongly about it.
A motion can include.
Fair enough.
As amended.
I would like to put a motion on the table, ma'am chair, to approve the budget subcommittee minutes for September third, October first, November fifth, December seventeenth of 2021, as amended.
You could also, are there multiple?
It is one amendment. The amendment is to.
Do we have a second? All second, thank you.
My request, and Superintendent Wood, I will hand my notes off to you, so you don't have to frankly take this. In September third minutes, as we talked about the goals for the upcoming year, so this, it was already reported back to this committee, but I just want the minutes to reflect. Letter D added to this, which is quarterly deep dives.
Yes.
Being strategic analysis into trends and changes that have long-term impact on our district financial health and options, including enrollment rates and school choice funding.
Yes.
So, that's been a big focus for the budget subcommittee, and I just thought that the minutes could reflect that.
Yep.
So, if you'll pass that over.
Perfect. Thank you.
I only have one small thing on the last one, on December seventeenth, just to include who took the minutes, who's submitting them.
Oh.
Which I am assuming is Mr. Wood.
Yep.
But just to, just to keep them official.
I have no further comments, as I was not in attendance at these meetings, as is reflected in the minutes. The budget subcommittee being Ms. Stanishevsky, Ms. Boudreau, and Mr. Wood. All right.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else? No? All right. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, they pass. Budget transfers.
Yes, so as I mentioned, so we'll do this in two segments, one this meeting and one next meeting. Again, none of our control lines are out of whack, are out of balance. You can tell by these line transfers are very small. You have from where we will find, find the money and move the money to the account that is in a negative balance. You want me to read?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers as presented by the super in $5,456.09.
May I second that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh, no. I lost my checklist. All right. So next on our agenda, we have a proposed CPA grant for the baseball dugouts. And Christie Dyer has been patiently waiting for us to discuss that. Unfortunately, it did not make it into the packet, but I did send the email, the written grant. Ms. Dyer, if you would like to just briefly overview this grant for the school committee?
Sure. So really what I'm here looking for, by the way, I'm Christie Dyer. I am on the Smith Academy Booster Club. I'm currently the Secretary of the Booster Club and have been so for about, I think, six years now. So I'm here tonight to ask the school committee for a letter of support for an application that we put forth to the Community Preservation Committee for a, for money for the varsity baseball field at Smith Academy. Just to give a little background, in 2019, we started talking about the project to do the softball dugouts. And so we did, and the reason that we chose the softball dugouts was because we had a parent that was involved in the, in the Booster Club that was willing to help with with getting the plans drawn up over at RK Miles and things like that, so that's where we had started. So we had done some fundraising through a golf tournament and a solicitation drive for, through local businesses. And we raised the money, which I think it was about $9,000, like when all was said and done, to build those dugouts. So, so fast forward to kind of this project, we were, we were looking forward to be also able to do the baseball dugouts. But then the pandemic hit, and we were feeling like it was not ethically okay to be asking businesses for anyone, really, for any kind of donation during that time. And we were not able to do the fundraising that we wanted to for, for the baseball dugouts, which was a bummer for us because we wanted it to be a kind of an equitable experience for both the girls and and the boys at Smith Academy, and to have access to the same facilities. So somebody had told us about the, the grants that the Community Preservation has, and we decided to fill one out and to, and to try to get some money for the baseball dugouts. And part of the application process is getting support from different stakeholders in the community. And so so far, we have gotten letters from the superintendent. We have gotten a letter from Allison Schlesky, Athletic Director. We have gotten a letter of support from the Rec Department. And the school committee was, was the last one that we were looking to get a letter from. And so just one, I guess, last important piece is that part of the application does ask for in-kind money from the organization. So we had said that, I guess the total that we're looking for is about $13,000 this time around, just with with the inflation costs, or the inflation of like building materials. So, and 3,000 of that would be coming from in-kind money from us, which we just did a calendar raffle in the month of December, and have already raised that money. So that is, in a nutshell, if I have any questions about it, I can try and answer as best as I can.
Ms. Dyer, so just to clarify, the total cost of the project is $13,000? 3,000, no?
Yes, we actually over budgeted because we were not able to get updated. We have not yet gotten updated costs for the cement and some of the other materials that we did not purchase at RK Miles. The only update, updated estimate that we had gotten was from our initial materials list that we used from the softball dugouts. And so we, we are, had just gotten that for, for the baseball dugouts.
Okay, so the Booster Club already raised the $3,000, and then is applying for the CPA grant for the remainder of that money?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify the school committee obligation financially. And then does that, you know, you spoke to the materials and the supplies, does that speak to the labor costs? Or is that something that the Booster Club is looking?
We did not pay labor costs the first, the first time around because it was a project that the town actually took on for us, which was really awesome. And so there were no labor costs initially for the, our first go-round. We are going to explore more of, of who is going to do the building once, if, once, if this, this project is approved.
Are there any long-term costs that the school district would end up assuming for this after it's built?
Not, I mean, the only, the only things, the only maintenance that we have come up with, and this time around, we're actually looking into doing a different kind of siding, use T-111 the first time around in the softball dugouts. And so we're actually looking to, to do something different just because, to actually take away some of the, the maintenance that could be repainting the siding.
Okay. Christie, is this just for, did you do it in three phases? I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
It would, for what? For the, for the softball dugouts, or for?
Yeah, you're right. I'm combining it with something else, I'm sorry. Just kidding. I was thinking the whole.
Yeah.
Okay, that's perfect. So she just needs our letter of, just a letter of support.
Support. I'm happy to support that. My only question comes down to if we have already supported one other initiative that's going for the same pool of money, is there any detriment to either causes if we're supporting more than one?
Nope. Like in terms of being awarded a CPA?
It's like, well, if we're pushing two horses, are we hurting somebody because we're like?
No.
I don't know the group making the decision, so I'm just asking the question.
The answer is no.
Yeah.
I'm not arguing, I'm just checking.
I'm on that group. I can tell you the answer is no.
Okay.
Yeah, you're fine. They both have equal opportunity and equal.
I just don't want to put either of them ahead.
Legs underneath one or the other. Yeah. Yep, that's a good question.
I'm sorry, Kathy, did you?
Nope, I'm fine.
All right.
Well, do you want a motion?
Sure, you can, yeah.
I'll make a motion for the school committee to submit the letter of support for the CPA grant for the dugouts.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You writing that letter?
I suppose I'll have to. Thank you so much for coming. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Christie.
I know, thank you for taking this on. All right, let's hear about superintendent goals.
So my draft goals are in your, your packet. I align them with the evaluation tool. Either kindly, maybe the best answer or the best kind of overview of what I've chosen. There are some very specific kinds of things that need to get done between now and June that have to do with things that we have to do. So we have to update our school, our district improvement plan. And, you know, that's, that's the product. But it will also help us kind of define some instructional focus. So these are, I'm going to talk about, sort of the big picture, and they're kind of supported by these four different goals. So the district improvement plan will have different components to it. And the, the biggest component, of course, is how do we improve as a district? One area would be in, in terms of instructional performance and instructional goals that we have for ourselves as a district. So a big piece of that will get done, identified through that plan. And so in order to meet the, those goals that I assume we will, we will lay out for ourselves, we will need some professional development, and we are required as part of a, as a district, we're required to have a professional development plan as well. So that will be a big part of my instructional leadership that I'll provide. As far as the management operations, I think one of the things that is probably the biggest policy decision the school committee does, which is the deciding on the budget. And the budget is the underpinning of all of the essential activities of the district and what we're trying to achieve. And so by identifying where our priorities are as a district and getting that passed by the town, I think that's a huge piece of what my role is in this chair. And so I see that as a goal too. In, in terms of making both of those, one and two, successful, I really need to have a series of opportunities with parents and staff and students, as appropriate, at the, certainly at the middle school and the high school level, to make sure that we have, they have a clear understanding of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to be about. And that certainly comes, the best evidence of that usually is a very successful town meeting. So, you know, through the series of meetings that I have for these other pieces, I hope to be able to articulate what the school committee has laid out as the priorities for, for the budget. And those will be the underpinnings of our school improvement plan, our district improvement plan. I was just on a webinar just before this meeting about our Student Opportunity Act, which is an element of the Chapter 70 Funding Formula that was passed a number of years ago, but through funding shortages, hasn't been funded fully, but they're committed to funding it this year. And we do have a Student Opportunity Act plan. I, I want to fold that into our district improvement plan so that we don't have these multiple plans, we have sort of one plan. And so that, that'll be a piece of that, and that requires a, a great deal of, of family and community engagement. I asked specifically about, is there going to be future ESER-like money, federal funding, or? And, and to be clear, ESER isn't about COVID in, in the, in the sense that they're trying to remedy COVID. What they were trying to remedy is the educational impact of COVID. And I was trying to say that last night, I wasn't being very articulate. And certainly, the, the Student Opportunity Act also, it was before COVID, but was really about looking at populations within your school and asking yourself, how best are you going to move forward? If you had more resources, how would you work to make sure that students with disabilities were having equal access to services and programs that you had in your district? How are students who are English language learners having access to programs and services? And are you appropriately attending to their educational needs as well? So that is a big part of the family and community engagement goal as well. And then through it all, you know, I think the professional culture, as part of my entry here today, this year, you know, I certainly learned about relationships and about how, you know, COVID has really strained. I think that's the best word that I can, you know, describe it, and we're not unique at all. You know, and I think that's important for everybody to understand. COVID has just strained people's relationships in very meaningful ways. And so, you know, through a lot of the activities that I think we'll build on for one, two, and three, I hope to build a professional culture and a professional relationship among everybody, parents, school committees, staff, teachers, administrators, so that we have a professional culture that is united and unified around our priorities as a district.
All right, thank you. What questions do committee members have about the goals that our superintendent has presented?
Who else want to jump first? I have a few, but I don't need to go first.
You can go first.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So first off, I really appreciate having these. I know you came in in July as an interim, and as we've looked to go further down the path together, I'm really thrilled to see goals in front of us so quickly. I, I appreciate that they're time-bound and fairly specific, but broad enough that one would expect a superintendent to have. As we look at the professional culture, however, I'm curious if you have given some thought as to how one will measure that. So I, I agree that, that it's important. And I, I don't disagree with the actions. But in terms of being able to say, I did it, how are we going to measure that?
Sure, I mean, you know, the A measurement, you know, I, in truth, you know, all of these goals could have some additional rubric that has maybe more of the soft skill piece that could be identified for each of the goal areas that actually the rubric does kind of speak to in, in a sense. You know, I, I put down a, a task that would be completed, the contracts, for our teachers and our paraprofessionals. You know, that would be the measurement that, that we are on, on the way to getting done. And that would show that we have a relationship, that we have agreement, we have, we were able to build consensus in a meaningful way.
That's part of it. I, I guess I would love to think of professional culture as a little bit broader than just that, because that feels very specific.
Yep.
Obviously, this group is part of that culture for you as well.
Right.
So.
Well, you're, you're a big part of whether or not we have a successful teachers contract.
True, true, true.
Because you represent the community, you know, in the sense. I, I also look at the time that we have. I have six months to kind of try to meet something.
Okay.
Or be in progress toward meeting, so.
I think the other piece that I would like to have a little discussion with my counterparts about is the opportunity to add one more item to this list, which would be around the idea of asking our superintendent to enable and facilitate some type of a strategic discussion that would be focused on sort of mid- and long-term financial stability. So that we're, in the budget process, we do that, but it really looks at the next year. But to also say, you know what, we're a very small district. We've come through a very, like, like every other district, there's been a lot of financial turbulence of sorts that kind of marries up with everything with COVID. And just to make sure that we're really well-aligned as to what the longer-term outlook, based on some of our short-term decisions, starts to be. And I, I guess I just think having that conversation with a lot of transparency and, and to be thoughtful about doing it now so that we don't get ourselves down the road, having not seen what was coming based on some decisions that we're starting to make. And, and just, you are in the best position to sort of pull together the information that this group would need to have a meaningful conversation. And I would love to see that happen. I don't, I may be alone, but that's.
I mean, I think financial sustainability is, needs to be a priority. I have, I said that. Yeah. Are you suggesting adding?
There are other ways to make that happen, but I guess it was sort of like, how do we make sure? It's one of those, it's, it's the paving of the. It's one of those, it's, it's the paving of the, the parking lot. It's the kind of thing that's easy to kick down the road a little bit. It's like, oh, we can do that in six months, or oh, we could do that with next year. And there's a point at which you kick that can down so long that, you know, potholes are probably not the right analogy, but that you start to find places where you have troubles that are much harder to address.
Sinkholes.
Sinkholes. So, just to borrow our earlier conversation.
I think it does fit, Christine and I talked about this briefly yesterday. You know, I think that conversation about financial sustainability certainly fits under number one and looking at, you know, making sure it's part of our plan to look at all of our options for financial sustainability. I was very clear that I think if, if anybody came up with the R-word, and I said that had to be the school committee's conversation first and foremost, before I went down any path of looking down any investigation of that, because that's a, that's a huge conversation, community conversation to have. And, you know, I don't disagree that, I think in some respects, you've had it or you've had components of it in the past. We certainly, as a district, because we are receivers, and this has come up a couple of times by email, we are receivers of rural aid. And as, as party to that, we are required to have conversations, ongoing conversations about collaboration with our demographic and, and geographic neighbors about how to share, how to create efficiencies within our districts. It doesn't come out and say that we have to study any kind of regionalization or anything like that. That is not a requirement. But we have to talk about how to, how to gain and continue and sustain our regional efficacy as, as a, as a district.
I guess I would also just offer up to, to the three of you and to Jen, I raise this not with an agenda or a horse in a race. I don't have, like, it's not me saying, oh, let's get ready to do X, because I, I really don't have that in mind. I just look at where we are through sort of the lens of the financials and the decisions we're making start to set us up in when we are another. And I just want to be conscious of those conversations that, and those decisions, that we're all on the same page, whatever that page is. So not, no horse in the race. Although it must, it would seem like I would, but I don't. And this gives us, adding it to the superintendent's goals, both says from us to him that we think that's worthy of making sure he gets it done. That it's like, yes, please do spend time on this. And it gives us a way to come back and check that it, that it happened.
Do you think that's doable now?
Well, I think it's definitely doable to have it part of that first, and have it part of that conversation. And certainly in one, one and two, I think, I think it'll come up when we talk about the budget, you know?
Right, right.
How are we going to sustain this, you know, year after year? Can we, can, can we afford to do this? And so.
And I've even thought about that in terms of it's like enabling and facilitating the start of it. It's not to say that we're making some decisions.
Right.
But it's getting the data. It's setting the table. It's not necessarily finishing the meal.
Right.
Because I do think it's not a quick thing. I agree with you on that.
Right. And these are six-month goals.
Right. That's what I was concerned with. There's too much on the plate.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
I have something. I was wondering if, and this is just a very friendly tweak, to the family, family and community engagement, number three. If we could add a B to that about increased communications? Or I know you've been updating, putting your update on the website, but if we can push having that go out email, I know I have a lot of people asking me about that and I refer them to the website, but people are kind of.
Need to be shoved in their face.
Yeah.
I need it shoved in my face too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't feel like it's a taxing goal to add for you, but I think it makes sense to add it there that, you know, we want to look at keeping and maintaining good communication. So that's just a friendly little addition there. I do have a question for the committee, though. Because we are talking about these goals and how it would relate to the evaluation tool. Who on the committee has actually used our evaluation tool? You have?
Haven't we all done?
Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering if you did, because we did, you did not do Marty when he left.
Yeah, but we did it before.
Some of us actually did that because we did it before we found out we didn't have to do it.
Plus, we did it for John.
For John.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I just, yeah. I wasn't sure because I knew he was retiring, so it, I wasn't sure if you actually went through and did it. Because when we had our conversation about Marty, it was decided we didn't need to do it. So I wasn't sure if you did it then, which is why I was asking if everyone was familiar with it.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks. All right. Thank you very much.
Do we need to approve these?
And, and the conversation on the table, I'm, I'm suggesting we add something to that. And I don't know if there was quiet agreement.
Do you have some things, how, how would you, would you suggest adding this in?
I, I would leave it to the superintendent to add in if he thinks he has the spirit of what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm not looking to dictate that, but I didn't know if there was consensus among this group that we want to do it. That's why I'm.
I would love to have the, start the conversation for sure.
Okay.
I think as long as.
Transparency and all of that.
Yep.
I agree. And, you know, as you said, we are a small district. And in any district, the financial sustainability needs to remain a priority.
Small ones have less maneuverability.
Yes. All right. So.
I thought that we had to vote on these.
You do.
To approve them.
Yep. And the agenda missed a vote.
So in fact, we could give him a chance to update based on this conversation and vote the next week.
What I was going to suggest.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Is that we would see some updates and then we can approve them at our next meeting officially.
Okay. Sounds good.
Exactly. All right. The draft budget.
Okay. So in your packet is a preview, is the presentation.
On the back of the hymnal.
Yep.
So I want to first thank the budget subcommittee who's been very helpful in, but hone in on not only the budget itself, but also the message that we're trying to, excuse me, trying to convey about our needs and how we need to move forward. I'm just trying to figure out how to, again, do a presentation. So that the community can see it. There we go. There we go. So it still says draft simply because I, what's that?
Did I roll over something?
It's showing up on our screens. Are you, are you presenting this in the meeting?
No. So I think you need to go to Meet and present it to.
Through the Meet?
Through the Google Meet. I do not know.
Oh, you know what? Did I close? There we go.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm.
You're presenting to everyone.
Okay. I just wasn't on that tab.
Although we can view it on the other tab as well.
How am I gonna?
Yeah. So click back to the other.
Can I go back to my other tab so I can move it?
I don't think so.
Yeah. All right.
Really? I think you should be able to.
Is, is what's on the screen the same as our packet?
Yes.
Okay.
And we don't need to see it on the screen.
No, we don't need to see.
Wait, he has to be able to move the, the slideshow.
Do you still have it?
Yeah, no. So that you have to go back within the Meet and then.
I think you can make that screen bigger, though, right?
Right.
I see.
Yeah. You're presenting to everyone. It says that he's presenting.
It says that I'm presenting to everybody. Well.
We can see it.
Thank you, Tracy.
But they can see it because it's on my screen. Once I move back to here, you lose it, correct?
Tracy, can you still see it or anyone?
We, do, we don't, do we need it? Or can we, we can look at the packet.
Yeah, but the key, he can't move.
He can't move it forward.
I'll just switch back and forth. There we go. I'll just switch back and forth. So in developing this, this particular budget to date, and I think that, you know, the administration has been very helpful in making sure that what we've identified is what our services are that we need to have and what we want to make sure that we can deliver a stable and adequate education for the, the needs of all of our students. That's high quality for the educational, the social, emotional, and educational needs that prepare our students to be global citizens outside of Haffield and outside of Massachusetts and beyond. We want to make sure we have a safe school environment. And we want to make sure that we have the right kind of professional environment, professional opportunities for our staff to grow and learn in the types of educational needs that we have for our kids. These, by the way, are, are from our current district improvement plan. So nothing's been changed at that. I'm continuing to look at funding sources. We have an outstanding grant that we're waiting to hear from that Molly Bremner wrote to address social, emotional needs. We submitted it about maybe early December. She did an outstanding job on that. We just heard back that they're reviewing all of the grant submissions. So we know it's in the queue, but we don't know what the result of it is. And then more recently, sort of tied to the Student Opportunity Act that I talked about a little bit earlier and the rural aid piece that's part of, again, Chapter 70, there's also this Student Opportunity Rural Aid Grant that our collaborative has brought us together in the Connecticut Valley to look at for, again, for us to write a grant together that would help all of the districts in terms of some recent, some activities. We haven't decided on any particular area, focus area. And what, what was originally very enticing is the, the way it was presented. It said $100,000 per district that participated, which was very exciting. They're investigating that further. I don't think it's going to be 100,000 per district, but that still needs to be, to be investigated to be sure. But I, I do think we're going to participate in the grant because even if it's $100,000 and five, five districts participate, that's roughly, you know, $20,000 resources we didn't have before. So that's, that's all good news. So that work is still ongoing as well. This is a level services budget. That is, that what I tried to do was to look at what the administrators really felt was needed and is being done now and is moving, so we're moving it forward. The increases that we have are because in many cases, what we are doing now is being funded by ESER or the ESER grant or the COVID grant that you had from last year. And so much of that has gone away. And so you'll see that in the budget when you look at the detail that that money is in the, now either in the, on the, on the town side, and I'll talk about the, or the organization of the budget, and then, and/or school choice. And I'll talk at length about school choice as well. So what I've tried to do in this budget is we maintain the number of teachers and sections, teachers at HES in the sections at Smith Academy, maintain the two preschool classrooms, which was a priority of the school committee last spring, keep the electives that we offer at Smith Academy so that our students get a rich, rigorous education. To keep the sports teams currently as we have for our, for FY '23. I talk about the technology replacement cycle is part of the capital plan, which I think is really critical that we have it somewhere because technology is such an integrated part of what we do now. I mean, much of the curriculum that we have at, at Haffield Elementary, for example, relies on a technology component as some part of it. So it's really critical that we have a technology to continue to keep it updated. And as I say, also supports the existing software and available to the students that we have so that we continue that as well. This is a staffing overview of what we have currently. And I've made some adjustments, for example, in enrollment. I do hope to do a pretty extensive blitz to attract school choice in the next month or so so that we really can continue the numbers that we have, but certainly both of them if we can as well. So that's a hope as well as, we've talked a little bit about our preschool and how to make sure that we have those classrooms appropriately numbered at the start of the year. So those, you see some increases in numbers as well. And then, you know, for Smith Academy, again, keeping our students that transition at sixth grade if they're thinking, and/or at eighth grade for Smith both, for example, keeping them here as much as possible. Certainly, it's a very different type of education and we want to support that. But if we can keep our students or attract more school choice, we certainly want to do that. Smith Academy, I think, is, is really very special in the sense that we have those small class sizes. It really does give students a rich opportunity to engage with teachers that many high schools just don't have because of their size and their configuration. So it's very helpful. So we're, we're not expanding any staff at all. The paraprofessionals, we're not expanding. We did have a little growth this year. Right now, including with what we know for student population, we don't see a need for it for next year. The staudians will keep the same as well, even though that might actually be an area that we could have looked to support slightly differently. Administrator assistants, we're keeping the same number. And administrators, we have five. The two principals, the director, Special Education Director of Technology. Sorry, Paul, I always seem to forget Paul. And then the superintendent of schools. So here's a pictorial view of our budget. So I know it's small print, but the biggest part that you want to hone in on the course is the red part because that's instruction. So the biggest part, the, most of our dollars goes to the instructional needs of our students. And that's what we want to see as far as how a budget is developed. The, the other components, these are essentially, I spoke earlier about cost centers. These are the cost centers represented here in this pie chart. And so, and they have not fluctuated much between last year and this year. And so one of the things that I did in terms of building this year's budget, I don't know if you'll remember from last year. So just trying to learn some of the history of the district in respect and have a sense of carry forward of that. What I've tried to do is put all of our information about our district budget on one sheet so that going forward, you'll always have a history of what you budgeted, what your actuals are, and you can start developing that a little bit more. and you can start developing that a little bit more coherently in one, one budget document. So in your budget document that you have, you have what you budgeted for in '22, what you, what we're proposing for a total budget for '23. By total budget, it's everything that we're going to expend that we know about today. And then these are, these are the various buckets of money that fund the entire budget. And then, so it's itemized by the town budget, school choice, we have a rural education grant that we get, a very small one, Circuit Breaker, Title I, Title II, Title IV, the federal grants 240, 260, 274, those are primarily for special education, the athletic revolving account, preschool revolving account, and what we will have left for the ESER funds that we know about so far. And the, as far as the grants go, this, this isn't the totality of the grant, we hope. We hope the grant is larger than this. But this is based on what historically we've grabbed from grants. So you know that that's what we're grabbing again from grants to fund mostly staffing. But there are some supplies and some equipment and so forth that we do grab for, for, for the grants. So on the, getting back to the pie graph, so you have administration in, in there for, I know it's very small, so I can, I have to flip back because I can't even read it. You have administration, which is the darker blue. I can see that you're not, I do a color sheet for you. And then, which is a small sliver at the top, Programs with Others, this is primarily our students that we tuition to other schools for special education. Then it's, it's kind of an odd title, but Acquisition and Improvement. This is new equipment, essentially, new things that we buy that have a, in, in some districts, this would be your capital. If, if you were a regional district, this would be your capital line and so forth. So it's, it's things that last longer than one year. And then Facilities, the Facilities line as well, which is the, the bigger slice of the pie next, next to the second largest slice of the pie. Apologize again that it's not in color for you. And this is relatively stating, stable from last year to this year. So these are the, the important things to sort of take away from that. So.
Excuse me, could you mention something about that other big piece, the Other School? That's all our school.
Right.
Choice kids going out? What is Other School?
So Other, Other School Services, that's our line 3,000 lines. And so specifically, that would be like in your budget here.
The title got cut off, I think, as part of the.
Yeah, it's, it's called Other School Services. So it's like our district, our district nurse, transportation, sports, all the sports activities go on there. You, I can, I'll give you the, the line number accounts so you can associate the graph.
I was pretty sure what it was, but for the people.
Sure.
At home that are looking at the graph.
We need.
Would not know what Other School means.
Right.
So I just wanted to have that clarified.
Yep. So the other thing I did is for the budget document that you have in your packet, I, I organized it by, by area. So school committee is all together, superintendent is all together, technology is all together, sped is all together for the most part. And then elementary is together and secondary ed is together. Again, you, you don't use it every day. You don't know the, the code lines and so forth. We do have variables coming up in this school year before we finish the budget process, certainly. And so for the community, it's important to know that this budget may change over time because we, hopefully, if my goals are met, we will finish negotiations in a timely manner. And so we will, we will wrap that up into the budget and so forth. So we have teacher contract negotiations, we have paraprofessional contract negotiations. We certainly have COVID-19 needs. They may change for the better, for the worse, in the next three months. Federal funding changes, again, there is like crickets out there when it comes to federal funding right now. There's, there's nothing, no one's talking about where the federal government is going to do something different, whether it's in our stable grants, like the entitlement grants titles one and two and four even. And, and then, of course, ESER, which was a big federal grant. And so, you know, that's a big variable because that could be very helpful to us if we get some amount of money through a federal grant like that, even if it were competitive. Chapter 70, funding again, crickets, although I did learn today that the governor's pushed back his proposal to the fourth week of January. It's usually like the third, second to third week of January. His, his, it really doesn't matter what party, the, once the governor presents, it kind of goes into this wait process where you wait to see what the House will do. And then, and then the Senate doesn't act until the House is done. And unfortunately, it's late May before the, the Senate finishes. And if it has to go to conference, then you're right up to June 30. So a lot of times, town meetings make very important decisions in a void because they don't know the final answers, which is very, very unfortunate. Certainly, our school choice numbers, again, that's going to be a priority to really get out and, and make sure people know that we're, we're open and we have seats and we have availability. And then food service, this year, the federal government has stepped up and is paying for free lunch, free breakfast for all students, which is just absolutely amazing. And we should be in the black come June, if everything goes the way we hope it does. And there is talk, there is a bill now in Massachusetts legislation that Massachusetts will step up and take care of it for all, no matter what the federal government decides to do for next year. So if that happens, that's huge. And I have built this budget with that in mind, that somebody's going to come through. It's either going to be the federal government or it's going to be the state government. Because I know historically, there's been some money paid for a balance of, of costs. So, you know, I'm going forward hoping that the, the federal government or the state will, will, will take care of free and reduced lunches. And then last, oh, now it's deciding to work. The next slide is really a comparison of these other funding sources that we have. So our two main funding sources are the town and then school choice. That's, that's what we, those are our two main funding sources. The town has its own funding source of obviously town assessments, tax assessments and so forth, and then whatever they get for Chapter 70. Chapter 70, we don't know much about right now. So it's really, you know, what, what does the town have available for funding that, that will be part of the conversation, I'm sure, that we'll have in the next few weeks so that we better understand what, what's viable and what's not. Our school choice monies, we, we used $960,000 this year. Going forward, I'm proposing that we use about 855,000 because we're, we're estimating, and it's an estimate, that we will get about 860,000 through the school funding based, school choice based on who we have in our student population currently. And that's combined both gen ed and school choice from special ed funding. So it, it's gone down a little bit in terms of, I think, what we've gotten in. And we also have a very small reserve balance, and I don't want to drain that completely. So that, you know, because again, that's the only contingency of any kind that the school committee has access to immediately. Should a boiler go down or should we, you know, need a third bus or something over the summer, whatever it is, without having to go back to the town to do any kind of reserve, you would have the opportunity to vote that and have access to it. And then.
I'm sorry, can you just say that again? Are you saying that 850,000 is in the budget of school choice money to be used?
Yes, for next year.
That's just what.
Yeah, that's.
We're going to use what comes in.
Right. Which is typically what school districts do.
The school committee had previously had a cap on the, the amount spent per year. Do you know if that vote was ever rescinded? The cap was at 500,000 for years to not go beyond that in.
I can't speak to the vote. But they certainly have for more than the last year.
At least the last two that I know of, that I have good information on.
Right. Okay. There were some neighboring districts that completely depleted their entire school choice monies and really struggled and faced a lot of dire things.
Correct, yes.
And at that time, our school committee had made a resolution and a, and a vote to cap the amount of money of our school of choice that we put in the operating budget every year.
Yep. Certainly.
To protect ourselves from.
Oh, absolutely. That's why you shouldn't.
Depleting the bank of what we need. And, and then every year, we looked at what was above that $500 cap and what we could do with it, where we did the windows and the roof at Smith Academy. We did other projects in the gym, bleachers and things.
I think it's been going to pay the heating bills in past years.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I, I really looked at hard, is that I tried to move things that I thought really meant, are meant for operating and move them out of school choice. It, it got hard. I have to be honest. I had to kind of go back and say, ah, maybe I got to do a 50/50 here because, because I, I think, to your point, Kathy, at some point, you, you can't have this overreliance on school choice to operate the school system.
No, and that.
And we are there.
That was very clearly our objective, that I've been around long enough that we initially voted to become part of school of choice when it first became available to do us, to do it. And at the time, it was understood that school of choice monies are for the extras to, you know, provide extra programs or extra things to your students, you know, it wasn't your operational costs. We also did not want to rely on school of choice monies for salaries at all, ever, because it's such a, a fluid number that we felt that was unfair to our staff to have fluid money used for their salaries.
Right. So I did try to move most salaries over into operating, under the school, under the town budget for similar reasons. Yeah, I mean, it's. It's definitely a tough area.
The concern that I raised.
Preschool revolving, we'll, we will certainly have, again, same, same kind of model where we only spend what we bring in as far as that goes. And then athletic revolving similarly, although costs, especially for transportation, have risen. We have winning teams, so that's extra transportation. All good things, all, you know, things you want to support and have, but certainly add to the, add to the budget in that regard. So I just kind of talked about this already as far as the different things that we have available. I didn't mention the SR COVID funds, so we, we will have depleted COVID funds, which were last year's grant, FY '22, excuse me, FY '21. And we'll have, we'll finish ESER grant next year with funding things that we said we were going to fund as part of the grant. So a couple of staff positions are speech and language assistant and a couple of para positions. Title I, again, we're estimating, it went down, we had planned 25,000 in last, in this year's budget, but it went down with our knowing, so we're making up that shortfall. So I'm planning on what the shortfall amount is at 15,000. And then at Circuit Breaker, we, we're going to use a little more to cover some expenses in, in special education. And so it's, it's really a very challenging, you need all the pieces together to make the, the complete picture. So the budget that I'm proposing at FY '22, the complete budget with all of those cost centers, of funding sources, the complete budget of what we're expending for this year is $6,152,133. I'm proposing a budget for FY '23 at $6,547,38. So this would be the total funding. And then what we would do is look to offset one of the, the funding sources would be the town budget. Their portion would be $5,165,760 for an increase of $380,012. I'm just going to put a note to myself. I think that number changed a little bit, a last minute change. So we'll put that in a parking space and I will correct it later if I need to. That's the other thing, you make last minute changes to one document.
It circles all the way through.
I hope it feeds all the way through.
Yeah.
I think that one did not feed all the way through. I'll just be seeing, but.
So.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I, I think it's worth noting as we look at this increase, particularly in terms of what we're, what we're going to ask from town versus what we can look for from other sources, because I know we're going to stay aggressively looking for other sources, is that last year, when we were at this point in time, given all that the town had given during COVID, we were exceptionally frugal in what we asked for. And so part of the challenge in terms of what we asked for last year, going of what we're asking for and, you know, where we were a year ago to where we are now, is we trimmed it so tight that we had to come back and add some, like, we found some costs that should have been included that we didn't have in our budget, that we are now, you know, we had to spend SR3 funds to sort of find a way to offset some of those things. And so that's ESER money that we spent this year that we don't have next year. So I think part of the gap is by how, that we might have been a little too frugal last year when we went with our budget forward. And so I think it, it presents a little bit bigger of a gap than had we asked for what we probably really needed or where we actually are in reality today. So.
And what are the next steps? When is, when do you meet with the town and start going over this?
So I will, I'm actually, I'm meeting, the department heads are meeting tomorrow, so I'll get the schedule of when we're going to present the finance and and get, get all that tomorrow.
So I have a feeling we'll be discussing this draft several more times before we vote on it.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I, and I hope we have more information each time we do that, right? So if we have Chapter 70 information, that's really helpful because that, that, that puts a load off what the town feels responsible for, right? And, and if we have federal funding that's going to come forward, that's another piece that, you know, we can figure out how, how to, how to do this. The, the, the piece about Chapter 70, though, and I'm reminded of this. The, the piece about chapter 70, though, and I'm reminded of this today in this meeting that we had, with this Student Opportunity Act funding, which is supposed to be for all districts, we are supposed to identify in our plan how we're going to use that, the additional funding that we get to actually help those populations of students that we've identified to help. And so while it doesn't change, you know, in the scheme of things, it's still chapter 70 funding, but we have to be very clear in our budget that we are spending this amount of money on this plan
This need.
for these kids. And so when you do that, it's like a carve out, like it becomes untouchable to, to, you got to make sure you're spending it for that.
Right.
So, you know, I know the public thinks you can always just trim the budget, but in this case, you can't do that, or at least around certain things, because they're contractually obligated, they're fixed costs, they will happen next year, we don't have time to cancel and, you know, you know, you're going to have to heat the buildings, you know, you have to, you have to have the bus contract, you have to have those pieces. If you actually identified all those fixed costs, you really have discretionary over a very small amount, you and I, you know, and a very small amount of money.
That's the conversation we keep having at budget, is like, okay, have we identified everything that's contractual? Because once you do that, it's, it's very little left.
That seems to be the point to really drive home to the public and to the town, is how little of it is discretionary.
The, the part of this budget that I was really happy to see when Superintendent Wood shared it, we sort of saw the first pass in Budget Subcommittee, was a mindfulness to allow for some growth, which was starting out with two preschools, because I think we know, had we, you know, had we had that conversation earlier for this year, we would have probably had more kids in that second preschool, which would have been a win. So like, starting out at that position rather than coming to it later. And right now, it allows, correct if I'm wrong, for, at HES, that there would be two classrooms per grade.
Correct.
Which gives some flexibility in terms of having room for more students coming in from school choice, which is, you know, and revenue we could really use. But it also is a stability factor from, you know, looking at staff who, it's just not trying to contract down to one room and then back up. And the finagling that that requires is its own other challenge. So it feels like a nice commitment to our, our faculty as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, nice job to the Budget Subcommittee and Mr. Wood. Thank you for this presentation.
And I just want to say that this budget is a thing of beauty. Just though the layout, the way that you really separated out where all the different monies are coming from.
Thank you.
I love it. So that's just a stylistic point, but I'm very happy.
It's not stylistic if you can't, if you have so many pages, you can't process it.
Yeah, and it is very, it's just very helpful. I, I really appreciate the work that you've done to make sure that when we are pulling from these different grants, we are pulling everything for the right reasons to the right places. And it's very clearly illustrated that
Yeah.
that is what we're doing in this budget, so I appreciate that.
And, and I appreciate seeing sort of visually that like, oh, some of these funding sources, it's outside of our control. How much Title, I mean, Title I money is designated by things that are outside of our control. And if that shifts in half, I mean, our needs didn't change, we just got half the money.
Exactly.
So some of those things, it's nice to be able to have a visual to see the implication when a few things change in $10,000 increments, they start to add up on a small budget.
They do.
All right. Any other questions or discussion regarding this draft budget? All right. We will look forward to hearing more.
All right.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That being said, it is nearing nine o'clock.
Do we have our meetings next month? I'm looking at other items requiring
Yep.
And so before we go to executive session, I wanted to
I have down February 9th. And I did confirm with the town that we are good for these dates as well. So the second Wednesday is, yeah, February 9th.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Yep. And then actually going forward into
March 9th.
It would be March 9th.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Do committee members have anything else they'd like to bring forward for future meetings right now? Okay. Great. With all of that, thank you to everyone. I would like to move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to collect, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Additionally, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I declare.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Let's take a roll call vote. Bench, aye. Standish, aye.
We draw aye.
Engelhardt, aye.
All right. And I'm, we're not going to return until open session.
So a formal thank you for all of your time at Hatfield Elementary School. We'll see you next time with the academy. Now, we're going to see you in a month.
We're going to see you here.
But you'll see the kids.
The games you remember once it comes back around.
I wonder what I'm going to do with all the knowledge of who goes into what cost.
Get another cheat sheet for the next person. You know, I have to say, I, I really
Seriously, I was
Yeah, we know.